All right, so I'm opening up the select board meeting at 6:30 PM. And all board members are here in attendance. There's nobody remote and we are recording this meeting. Would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Want to say two after every time we do that. So item number two, asking for any one online or in person, if they have any citizen statements or petitions that they want to present to the board. Seeing none, I will go on to number three, which is community events and announcements. So we've been mentioning this each meeting in September and now it begins today is October 1st and the second annual scarecrow contest is going on. So if you are driving around town, you should see scarecrows out here and there. Maybe even a member of the board has one in front of his home. So that contest winner will be announced on October 27th. So on to number four, appointments. So Frank, are you in the audience? Are you on?
So Chief Frank's a previous special officer. He's at that age now where he's becoming a traffic.
We're gonna do them as. Alright, so you just said we want to get that out of the way as I brambled. Alright, so real quickly, Frank Minicello, we were, we need to appoint them as traffic constable. Do you want to?
Sure, Frank Frank's been a special police officer for us for over a decade. He's just at that age where he can't be certified as posted anymore to be a special police officer. So we'd just like to transfer him over to be a traffic constable.
So I'd be looking for a motion to appoint Frank?
Second.
Discussion? All right, all those in favor? All those against? Motion passes. Thank you Frank. Alright, Chief.
Alright, so I'd like to introduce this tonight to Gabriel Lopez. Gabriel is from Hockington, Mass. He graduated from Merrimack College with master's degree and went through their program for the full-time police academy. He served a little bit of time in Whalen. And he's here now to fill our open position. Went through the interview process, full backgrounds already completed. He's ready to roll as long as you guys are okay with everything.
Alright, are you excited to come to the little town of Menden?
Absolutely, sir.
So I'd be looking for a motion unless the board wants to ask Gabriel about why he'd like to join us.
I move to appoint Gabriel Lopez, the position of police officer of the Menden Police Department, step pay rate one of $1,193.47 per week. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Seeing as there's none, motion passes. Welcome.
Thank you.
You want to take a picture?
Yeah.
Welcome to town.
Come on, get in the photo.
And he's ready to roll, so he's gonna be on the road Sunday, so.
Alright.
Come in the middle and get the flag on. We'll get them and then just three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so on to letter C, which is Rory Chrisfield, right, is in the audience. Do you want to cut him off and join us for a sec? I know this is the worst part.
I only can't be here, so I'm.
Alright Jen, why don't you let us know?
So we search for municipal clerk. It is going to be working in the town clerk's office for up to 14 hours a week. And we received 15 applications. We reached out to four candidates to interview. One ended up withdrawing, so we interviewed two candidates. And Rory is our pick. One of the things I liked about Rory is her just commitment to local government. She was very, I guess, enthusiastic about local government. And we in need of a lot of people who are in local government, so.
That indeed.
This is right. And good news, I think the motion might say contingent on background check, which I just checked and it has just come in and it's a.
Really exciting, so you can start right away? And you live in the little town of Menden, right?
Yeah.
Say, are you really happy to be here in the little town of Menden? So board, does anybody have anything for Rory?
I will say this was filed as municipal clerk, so as the kind of ebbs and flows of the work in the town clerk's office, this position of Rory can help support other offices in town kind of as needed with the primary focus of the town clerk, so we won't take away from that in elections. But getting cross-trained in a whole number of categories.
Which I think you'll enjoy with her, like I said, her desire to learn a lot about local government.
I've seen your name for local elections. Have you helped with the elections before?
Yeah.
Yes, I thought so.
Alright, so I'd be looking for a motion to appoint.
I move to appoint Rory Chrisfield, municipal clerk, $22 an hour up to 14 hours per week.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Very none, welcome to the family. We'll see you around.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, I mean, we can take. Okay, so number five, there was an email from the TA. There was a lot of changes to the minutes. So I'm gonna pass over this so that people have time to consume it. And then we'll bring it back at the next meeting and then do the approval there. And then circulated for this week was September 17th, 2025, which is number six. Alright, so number seven is a public hearing. We're gonna pass that over until, is it gonna happen on the next?
Yeah, we're going to continue it until the 15th, into our next meeting. There's a 6:35 meeting about a transfer of ownership, stock ownership of a liquor license holder. That should be a pretty quick public hearing. There's no substantive operational changes and then this will be at 6:45 on the 15th. On the 15th, we're also having the planning board joint meeting to talk through their candidates. So we could talk about it kind of later on in the specifics rather than hijack this, but I'd like to set a time that the planning board can be here at and that would also be an end time. But we will be continuing till October 15th at 6:45 PM.
Excellent. We're gonna need to vote on that?
We don't, and I said it beforehand, but the applicant, other folks who are interested were notified ahead of time today, so they didn't show up and.
So we don't need a motion to continue? Because we never.
Chair can just declare it's continued.
Well, I so declare. Alright, so I'm gonna skip real quick down to number 11, which is HSA contribution limits. And so this is, we've talked about this in the past. This is about paying $1,000 into the high deductible plan as a stimulus for the healthcare plan.
Yes, we talked about this during budget. The town covers portions of deductibles for the typical plans. But, you know, the high deductible health plan has too high of a deductible for us to do that. So because there's an HSA health savings account associated with it, we had budgeted for $1,000 per plan user contribution. When to go make that contribution, accounting wanted a specific vote to reference from the select board that this was your intent.
It tells that there's an IRS rule against us paying the deductible for this type of plan.
I just thought we couldn't afford it.
But we're talking about getting, getting contributions. Thank you.
So it was already voted.
So it was attenuated and then voted out of the budget and they won a hard vote.
I understand, but the point is we're authorized because the money's already appropriate. We just need to take a vote.
That's correct.
This is intended to extend, possibly use, diversify the healthcare options to the employees. So eventually move to this type of plan, which might long-term provide economical benefits to the task.
Lower premium than the other two. So we're trying to modify behavior by.
Plan for the next budget as well. Alright, so I'd be looking for a motion to establish the contribution limit of $1,000 per fiscal year for applicable high deductible health plans payable in two years.
This is per person participating, per employee.
Per plan, yep. And it's paid in two yearly installments. So, you know, someone leaves mid-year, someone doesn't leave the day after we give them $1,000 in their HSA because their HSA is portable, you take it with you after you leave your job. So we wanted to split it up to make sure that didn't necessarily happen.
It's not a flexible spending account, it's a health savings.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So discussion?
Sorry, that should've been discussion.
It's alright. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Motion passes. Thank you. Chief is back to talk about number 10.
Let me lead with this. So the town administrator and I had our monthly meeting last month and we talked about in general, since we're adding traffic constables on a regular basis, it might be best to do something similar to what we do with the on-call firefighters and give him the appointing authority, so we don't have to wait two weeks, three weeks, the next meeting to get people on board. I think I described the program last time. Everybody's vetted, they're either have been through the police academy or retired police officers. And that's the only thing you have in the system. So he would just be able to have that authority to put him on the road and I think that's what we agreed upon. I had some paperwork, a letter of support. Andrew's been in and out the past week, so I didn't get it to you yet, but we can do a letter of support too forward if you want.
Do we need to, as a housekeeping matter ultimately, kind of catch up and appoint them? Or is it just currently, so it's just gonna currently delegate it to the chief?
That's an administrative change.
Yeah, so the way the on-call firefighters works is the town, you've delegated the appointing authority to the town administrator upon the recommendation of the fire chief. So if you want to vote the same way.
Yeah, the same.
Yeah, authority to the town administrator and then the bush say it, but upon recommendation.
I'm gonna delegate appointing authority for Menden Traffic Constables to the town administrator upon recommendation of the chief.
Second.
Discussion?
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think the more, unfortunately or fortunately, depends on the way you look at it, but the more we can put on the town administrator's shoulders on the day-to-day operations basis, then the more smoothly the operation should go. So that's the area cuts down.
And these aren't benefited positions or anything like that, they're strictly just for details. And obviously, all benefited positions, I'd still like to bring forward to you, let me take a look at it and get the backgrounds to you, so.
So, yeah, all those in favor? Aye. All those against? Motion passes?
Thank you, appreciate it. That's it for me, right?
That's it for you. Alright, one more before we get into the long ones, which is number 12, the stormwater asset management plan grant application.
Yeah, so we've, it's actually a financing application. I got the motion right. Agenda item, so we've been approved for the grant through the Clean Water Trust. It's a $120,000 grant to do stormwater asset management. There's an article on the town meeting warrant for the local cash match that we talked about. Maybe it's, but there is a very detailed thing where we have to say what, when we voted and to give me the authority to file with the Clean Water Trust. The chair, the chair signs it. I can sign everything else, but the actual filing of it.
So this is another administrative delegation task, so just be looking for the motion listed here.
Stormwater asset management financing application.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Yes, Jeremy has mentioned that it's 6:45 and we have continued the Vanderbach hearing earlier in the night. We're continuing it now. Alright, so Mr. Dudley, let's go to number eight for the highway road maintenance plan. Let me see if I can figure out how to share this.
Can you change the notes?
Yes.
Just not sharing.
Sharon?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see.
Some little.
Katie, can you go to exit spotlight next to take control? You go to view? Focus on content? No, it's not there. Well, so everybody remote is seeing it because we're seeing it.
That's correct.
There we go. Carl said he can see it, so. Alright.
Just stop sharing and try again.
I don't, I think it's, I think it's us. As I can see it again, I think it's that. So is it up there? You guys all see it? You turn that on. That, that, one of those remotes over there is for this LG TV and it's probably up there. No? Alright. The audience.
What do you think? It's sharing it to a screen supplement?
It's sharing it on that. Showing up now? You can hit leave and go back. It'll start the recording back up again. Alright, for that. A little interruption there. Are people online? Are you seeing the presentation and hearing us?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Alright, you ready?
Alright, I know this has been a long wait. So we'll just jump right into it. First slide here is just going to outline our current road system, 56 miles of accepted roads in town. Our current RSR rating or composite road surface rating right now sits at a 70.02. Our estimated cost for repairs right now sits at $11.6 million. And 32.8% of our roads are either a major or minor rehabilitation. Might that mean, like a major rehabilitation would completely rip it out, completely redo it, which is what Wood Drive is slated for.
Can I ask you what the road surface rating is? Is that out of 100 or is that just about?
Out of 100.
And this is all from our pavement standard?
This is all from the pavement management, so this is actually updated on the online portal. This just kind of gives you a map of what, where the roads sit in town with the graph. So our red roads are major rehabilitation, our yellow roads would be minor rehabilitation. The darker blue is no maintenance required, green would be preventative maintenance and the light blue is routine maintenance. So our, we relied for a long time solely on chapter 90 funds and we were averaging roughly $275,000 a year. As you can see, I went back to 2018, we're right in that ballpark until we hit 2024, 2025. And then that started to take into account our fair share, which is a, another allotment that comes out from the state on top of chapter 90.
So chapter 90 allocations are based on roadway miles, population and employment.
So our past paving projects, starting in fiscal year 18, we resurfaced Park Street, Asylum Street, Maori Street for a cost of $186,529. The remaining funds were carried over for North Avenue. As we get into fiscal year 19, you can see that we did North Avenue with Hut in Place Recycling. If anybody's wondering what that is, that is what we did on Northbridge Road and Milver Road last year with all the fire shooting out of the trucks. It scared everybody. It's a pretty cool process if you actually go out and check it out. So $166,485 were spent there. Remaining funds carried over $246,938 carried to fiscal year 20, where we did, a lot of these are portions. So the North Ave portion would be from Northbridge Road to the Upton Town Line. So the portion from Northbridge Road down to Route 16 has not been redone. Same thing with Blackstone Street. This was a section of Blackstone Street that was reclaimed and paved, 201,000. Reclaimed and paved the remaining section of Park Street and Asylum Street and the remaining funds to carry over 144,466. Into fiscal year 21, my first year working on road projects, these were fun. Vincent Road, Blueberry Drive, Cranberry Court, Nelson Court, Hartford Avenue West, we're all chip sealed. Then if anybody doesn't know, chip sealing is a rubber glue that is put down and then you can either use a rubber or a stone chip to adhere to that glue and it makes for a wearing surface like we did on Northbridge Road last year. Remaining funds that were carried over to FY22, $147,869. We get into FY22, various cracks, crack sealing, which is a pretty cheap preventative maintenance tool that we have. And then resurfacing another section of Blackstone Street. I will say that there is one last section that needs to be done on Blackstone Street and that is from Providence or Main Street here to Wesley Drive. Remaining funds carried over after resurfacing Blackstone Street, 88,286. The reclamation of reclamation and paving of Daniels Road and Neck Hill. Neck Hill was done with RAP funding, which is a winter recovery assistance program that's put up by the state. We don't see that often, that money, I think in the past 13 years, talking to my administrative assistant, we've seen it twice. It's not a very common fund.
What triggers that?
Just, it's had the state, I don't know if it's how harsh the winter is. I honestly don't know a lot about it other than we thought that year.
And that is what I think it is, when you have a situation where it's a title.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just destroys.
Just, yeah.
But it's distributed to us because it's us or everybody gets RAP.
So all of these allotments are not just the, this is just men, this is, everybody is getting the fair share. Everybody gets RAP, everybody gets a piece of it when they distribute it.
RAP was last issued in, what, April 22, I think, I just saw it was the last. Yeah, that was the last time there was a declaration after that winter. So then we got it in '23 and since then, there's been no RAP.
So as you could see in FY24 and FY25, I put in what we spent the money on. '24 was when we did our pavement management and kind of wrapping my head around how we're gonna proceed with these road maintenance. Milver Road and Northbridge Road were decided, we decided to tackle those last year. Next, when we get into our current funding, there are some discrepancies, which I'm working with mass, with the state to try and figure out. Currently, you see our balance at $393,001. But if you look at the chapter 90 funds from 2024 and 2025, those numbers don't add up. We shouldn't, by my calculations, we had $625,686. So I'm working, working with them, trying to figure out why, where is that, the numbers that are not.
We didn't receive it into our account and because we didn't spend it, we didn't see that, like. Or it just.
No, because I have the recent ledger that was sent to me, which is what triggered this. And I'm looking at our allotments going, that doesn't match what? What we, what we put out for 2024, 2025. And then what they gave us, they don't match up, so I'm trying to figure out.
And Chuck, can you explain a little bit of how chapter 90 works? They say you get this much money, but it's in a reimbursement process.
Yeah.
So chapter 90 is a reimbursement process, so what will happen is, like with Milver Road, we did that last year, it was a chapter 90 project. The town puts the money forward for that project, pays for it and then those receipts are then submitted to the state. And that reimburs them.
It doesn't require, it doesn't require budgetary approval from the town to create, to put our own money forward. We spend that and then it gets reimbursed. We, budgetarily, we charge it to a chapter 90 account and if necessary, run a deficit there. And then we submit for reimbursement and it brings the deficit back up and it's up to the treasurer to make sure there's money behind the checks that we cut. But budgetarily, it doesn't require the town to flow, to make any additional appropriations.
So it's another area, kind of like snow and ice, where municipality can run deficit spending potentially.
A little bit, that requires us on the front end to commit budgetary resources to it. Chapter 90 doesn't require the town to commit anything to it.
The state, the state gives us the number.
It's not considered.
Yeah, the state gives us a ledger that says this is your current balance, this is what you have to work with. If we spend over that, we're on the floor.
So then we do this with all sorts of reimbursable grants. The information gets transferred to accounting and we set up a budget. So we've got $100,000 reimbursable grant with the state for, you know, whatever study or something. We set up a budget for that $100,000 and then we spend it down and then as the revenue comes in, we put it in fund and it equals out at the end.
Just, the reason I ask, you say we spend down, we are, from a liquidity standpoint, are we putting assets forward and then the state's reimbursing us?
Liquidity wise.
And the reason I bring that up is if everybody's watching, since I see this carryover $100,000 every year, that potentially helps refund what would be future reimbursements. So it's not as though we're just sitting on building up this pile, you know what I mean?
So we say we carry over $100,000, there's not $100,000 in the bank that we keep. What we say carry over is we continue to have the authority to spend that $100,000 and then submit.
So what you're saying is it's a cash flow thing, the money's in their account right now. It's not only carryover for. Two, three, two years?
As far as I know, there's not a limit on it.
We, yeah, and we end up spending it down.
I will say, the reimbursement for Neck Hill Road and Daniels was submitted. I signed off on it, went to the state and then we just found out recently that it never get processed.
the reimbursement for Neck Hill Road and Daniels was submitted. I signed off on it, went to the state and then we just found out recently that it never get processed. There was a change in our representation. We were assigned a rep from the state every year or each town is assigned a rep. They switched, they were, they switched from our rep that we used to have to this one. And somehow in that switch, they never got that reimbursement. So we had to resubmit it. To it. So we should be seeing that coming back.
So you're saying that if you fix the current balance that with the town funding, that twenty six allotment that gets approved. You know, you're like one point four million or something.
So when I asked for this ledger, I also asked where we sit with that. And she said, as far as right now, there is no, that, that allotment is not approved. So I'm kind of taking it as we're guaranteed two hundred seventy five thousand. That's what they give us every year. That allotment was, and you could probably speak more to this because it was in legislation.
So the chap- chapter ninety and the general fund budget is approved at two hundred million dollars. And that's the formulation which is based upon population, employment and road miles. There is a supplemental one hundred million dollars included in the bond bill. That is solely on road miles. So that helps more rural communities that, you know, got a ton of miles. We still have to you know, upkeep them just because we don't have as many people driving on them all the time. We still have just as harsh of winters. So that's what that, that's why how we get up to five eighty eight this year. That's not expected on a go forward basis. It's kind of a nice to have this year.
So, so just looking at this slide, it's up now, the current balance three ninety three is, is would be called carryover previous chapter ninety.
Yes, but that, that.
Which might be low.
Yeah, based on the numbers that it is low and I need to figure out why.
Five eighty eight is the FY twenty six allocation plus their bond bill supplement. We're assuming it's going to be in this neighborhood, but you're also saying it's not going to be less than two seventy five. That's our normal amount.
Yeah, it's not going to be less than our normal because that's already set in stone. It's this is additional.
STM article two fifty, is that for this coming STM or are you saying?
This was what we voted last time. So we haven't yet. Right. We haven't used it yet. So before I get into the next slide, which is going to talk about what we want to proceed to do for roadwork. I just want to touch on the fact that we're, I'm, I'm basing these decisions on these roads on our cost benefit value that it was given to us from Bena. They may not be the worst roads in town, but from a standpoint of this, the, these roads are heavily traveled. We need to do something to them. They're looking at it and I have the list here, cost benefit value to us. And then I look at the RSR of the roads and I also look at local knowledge. So you're going to see, I'm looking at Thorn Street and Gaskell Street, which are a little bit further down on the cost benefit value. But their, their cut throughs, their major cut throughs for main roads and Gaskell, it's horrible. The only people that don't want to pay for the residents that live on it.
Are you considering like what might happen next year when, when we have detours in place for the Providence Culvert? And is there any roads along those detours that need to be improved because they're going to have a lot of heavy traffic for four months?
I don't, the only road without getting into it too much, our, our discussions about Providence Road. It's looking like Cemetery Street is not going to be favorable to make it a two way street, which means the only road that's really going to be affected by this is Providence Street going out of town. I mean, the other roads are just going to have regular traffic. Cemetery Street is on here. But it's going to be the same amount of traffic, I would say. Our pavement, pavement schedule FY twenty six. I know we talked about this this morning, Mike, is Hartford Ave East and where we sit with that project. That is number one. Want to get it done as soon as we can. We're at a standstill in that project because we're waiting for Verizon to come out and move their lines so we could take the old poles out. And until that's done, we can't do anything with paving. Talking to the project manager down there, he doesn't think that's going to happen this fall. He thinks we're probably more likely looking at spring.
Which that's a bummer because they did all that.
It is a bummer. I was really hoping to get that done and I've talked to both our paving contractor and the company that are committed to do the milling and they both recommended not doing the sections we want to do and have those seams on Hartford Ave East. Cause then five years. Yeah, there's where the, where our new pavement is going to meet there and pavement. It'll be a seam and then we run into problems if water gets into those seams. On one, on the most heavily.
We need that road the last one.
After you and I spoke this morning, I reached out to Brian Murray to the state rep because seems like this issue with Verizon just not being timely doing their piece of it.
Right. We should be clear that National Grid did their piece.
Yeah, National Grid did their piece. The new poles are in. It's just a matter of Verizon coming on and taking their wires off of the old poles and moving them to the new poles. And then we can remove the old poles and continue with the work.
Is the old poles back to National Grid and we have to wait for them to come back or is that? I know that they're a party.
I think that maybe National Grid.
Yeah, National Grid takes care of the poles event. If National Grid and Verizon, they, they trade off different, different towns. So Grid sets the poles, but they, just like you said, they set them. Then Verizon has to move their wires. And once it's done, Grid comes back and pulls, but they can't pull them until the wires are off.
You're wondering why it said it was back while I.
So just a glimpse of this pavement management schedule or this payment schedule, Hartford Ave East is number one. I already touched on Gasco one, Thornton Street is there. Both cut throughs, a lot of heavy traffic. There, those roads I'm looking to hopefully have done before this season wraps up. I'm going to use the town funds to, to complete those.
Before the winter?
Yeah.
You refer to the town funds.
Two fifty.
Why, why do we make that distinction? Just curious. I look at the whole balance. You've got about a million dollars.
So I've been trying to do projects with the town funds and then projects with chapter ninety. Because it, it gets more complicated when you have to explain to the state that I'm using some money from here and some money from your, your pool. So I've just, for ease, I've been trying to keep them separated. Morrison Drive is not super high on this list, but the road is beating up on our fire equipment, our school buses and this two and a half inch hot mix asphalt overlay is a bandaid that's going to last us a few years.
Basically, you're just going to top it.
We're going to top it so that it's a smooth surface for them and they stop beating up on our equipment. And then we can look down the road to do a more permanent.
So it's aligned that at all? That's not lined, right?
The only roads that get lined down are.
I think that's sort of important to call that out because not everything's going to be full reclamation. It's, it's the mix of maintenance plus full reclamation that's going to allow us to manage all roads.
Right, yeah.
So keep up. Let everything get down to full reclamation.
No, full reclamation is the most expensive process. But I talked about hot in place recycling. There's also a cold in place recycling that they, you, they go down deeper. They inject this material into the grindings and everything that are coming out, put it back down and it's drivable the same day. But when you look at a hot in place as opposed to a cold in place, it's twice the amount of money to do cold in place. So as much as I would love to try it, we're more with limited money right now.
I ended up and moved back together.
Yeah. Milford has used it a lot on their main roads and they swear by it, but I'm going to spend a lot of money to do it when I.
Just because there's less downtime.
Yeah, yeah. So the pavement schedule for FY seventeen, and again, this is, this is all funding based. So if we have enough money FY twenty six, springtime, we can do some of these and move things up. But just a picture of this, your red road on here is going to be if we don't have town funding. And we're just relying solely on that two hundred seventy five thousand dollars. And this one would rely on some carryover from twenty six to do it. But the red, as you see, these, these next couple of slides are if we don't have the two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
If we don't have the two hundred fifty thousand dollars, we don't do the red.
Right.
And this is your, when you say minor rehab, you're saying the whole street's going to have minor rehab or portions of the street?
So Bellingham Street would be a complete rehab, minor rehab on that. Minor rehab is going to be a hot in place. Or something along those lines. Major rehabilitation, it would be full depth recognition. And I Cemetery Street may be able to get away with a little, something less than a hot in place. It's tough to determine now. I need to get contractors to come on and look at it and say, yeah, this, because some of these roads aren't good candidates for certain things.
Yeah, like things with hidden culverts underneath or minor bridges, stuff like that.
Or the material that was used before.
Right.
There were a lot of chip seals that were used before because it's one of the cheaper methods. And as you saw in the previous slide where it was two hundred seventy five thousand, two hundred seventy five thousand, two hundred seventy five thousand, that doesn't go a long way. So it was used a lot before, but then when you start putting multiple layers of rubber on the road and then you put fire to it, what happens?
Right.
Not a good.
Yeah.
Not a good candidate. But that's why I say that some of these roads may not be good candidates for a hot in place recycling.
They just need to be chopped out.
Chopped out mill though, there are different methods.
When, when I think about funding sources and I see all the schedules already twenty six and twenty seven so far, you're using three ninety three. Five eighty plus fifty is your total bucket. What is your total amount of funding you're using? Cause I feel like.
So it's going to, again, depending on what we have here. I'm going to take that, once I get a finalized number from them, I'm going to use that as a starting.
Just for these slides, because you, you, your red is indicating that if you don't get the supplemental two fifty, that won't get done.
Yeah.
So I'm just doing the math in my head to say for twenty six and twenty seven, it's not red.
That, right. And so they, these are all up for, I could, if we have the funding, I could then say Bay Street's going to be a chapter ninety project and not a town.
You're just saying what's your starting?
What's your starting point for a bucket of money?
For this, for these black line.
The two seventy five.
Okay.
The two seventy five is all that we are going to be guaranteed after this year. There could be more.
So previous roll plus two seventy five.
Yeah.
So you are including five eighty eight figure.
I am not at the moment because I don't know what they are, what, where we're setting.
Ninety three, two seventy five.
That's the two fifty in the November. Fiscal year twenty eight, this is going to be dependent on where we are with the Route sixteen project. These sit pretty high on our, our cost benefit value list and.
Maple's on us when they do that corner there.
So Maple will come, when they redo that intersection, it's only going to come down so far. I don't want to do our, you're going to come in and put machines all over and rip it up. They do it after they do theirs. So that's why I put this at FY twenty eight. And these are, if you see a theme, if you look at the last slide, Bellingham Street, Cemetery Street, Bay Street are all in the same area. FY twenty eight, Main Street, Maple Street, Elm Street, Emerson Street, they're all in the same area.
Is that helpful to you or you're just trying?
It's helpful for them because if I said, let's do Park Street and then let's go down and do Bay Street, they're going to charge us more money to move everything down to the other end of town.
So they just stay here for a few weeks.
They'll stay here as long as they need to, but being in this area up here, they're not going to charge us to move because they're right here. But if we're jumping all over town, they're going to be charging us to move to different places. Last slide would be roads for future consideration, the remainder of North Avenue. When I do that, I would like to do the remainder of Northbridge Road. Kelly and Wesley Drive sit on this list pretty high. And then Misco Road, Wood Drive and West Hill Road, I would say are probably three of the worst on an RSR rating. So I would love to do something with them if we have funding for it.
Yeah, Wesley and Kelly are kind of a cut through as well.
You say do something. So you've got like, you know, and our wood drive is like one little road reclamation, right?
That's a full depth reclamation, the price tag on that estimated, and this was twenty twenty three, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars.
And I look at Wood Drive, living there, oh, you know, I lived there. It's, it's a neighborhood to call the states. But part of it says, what would minor rehabilitation buy on something like Wood Drive versus the seven hundred thousand full reclamation for a lightly used neighborhood road? So have you looked at those sorts of options?
I haven't.
Like the chip sealing it?
Well, I think right now you generally come through and you kind of hit as many potholes as you can after every season. Is, so that's not money. We could do something like we're doing for Morrison Drive. There's a lot of potholes. You do a shim over the top of that, a two inch shim over the top. It's a bandaid. It buys us five years, maybe a little bit more. But those potholes and the underneath are going to start to show.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just wondering when you, when you look at the number of roads we potentially could take action, does it start to make sense to provide short term solutions for people?
So you mean while you're sprinkling the.
Couple of the other options that I've been exploring is our trackless machine that we purchased two years ago. There is the ability to buy a asphalt milling head. So we can then go out and utilize that to do, like if we go to Wood Drive, we say we're going to do the worst sections of Wood Drive. We mill that out ourselves and we repave it. You don't do the whole work.
You start using Misco Road instead of Wood Drive.
Misco Road. We'll say, we'll say Misco Road, we could say West. The other thing that I've done is I've talked to other towns like Milford who said, if you get a list of roads that you would like to do, they have more equipment than we do. So they have a paver, they have a milling head for their machine and they, and Oxford said the same thing. They're willing to borrow one to do some of these sections of roads. We can't do a whole road there for weeks, but it's a bad section. And actually you say Misco Road, Misco Road, like there is one really bad section that we could do and it would alleviate.
So just so folks understand, right now, we talk about this pavement, we are contracting out this work.
Yes.
Right. And what I'm hearing now is with potential capital investment, we might be able to take in some of that work and do it ourselves.
Some of it.
Well, maybe the, the.
You got a bad, you got a bad, you got a bad stretch of potholes on a road, we can mill that out and we can then pave it over and.
If you could borrow one of those units and prove out on a section of road.
I just told you, I've been talking.
No, no, no. I have to hear that. I just think, what I think, what people understand is how it's done, which you've explained. And the different opportunities you're looking at to make improvements. And, and I think, I would even say that if you're going ahead, none of your future beyond twenty six is looking at continued supplemental funding that we've given the last three years at town meeting. I would say that I know the capital planning committee is looking at that and they're suggesting we should keep looking at supplemental funding. So there's the potential, some of these things are.
In addition.
Right. So. Well, I mean, we've done what, two fifty the last two years. Our, the plan was assume two fifty, which you did. And we're into our third year coming up in November. The question is, does that continue? Right?
I mean, I would love for it to.
Right. So when you look at these road lists, it feels like, oh my gosh, it's twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty. Well, if we can, that doesn't include supplemental. So you potentially could bring it further if we continue the practice we started last two years.
First for me is I want to get a handle on this chapter ninety and where we actually sit. And then we have a better idea is I can start looking at like, say a Bellingham Street and have the contractor come out and say, is this a good candidate? And give me a price for it. So that I'll know chapter ninety is this much and this is what it's going to cost us. That's why when you see FY twenty six, there are numbers, this is what we're going to do because they've already done that. But it's also tough to go to a contractor and say, come out now and look at this road to do in two years. These two years could be, the condition of the road could be way worse. And then it's not a candidate. And I will say the milling head for the trackless can be bought with chapter ninety funds.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that if you could borrow and prove it out, it'd be a lot easier sell right to the town.
I talked to Trackless is a Canadian company. I talked to.
Tariffs.
Yep. But I did talk to a representative at a trade show I was at two weeks ago. And he is willing to get us a milling head as a demo to come down here and try it out to see how it works.
See, those things go a long way when you can show that it's a viable option and that your crew can handle it.
What's the cost of the head?
Without tariffs, twenty six thousand. And last time I looked, tariffs were putting us at like thirty four thousand. But again, that can be chapter ninety. That's just me filling out a chapter ninety request to say, hey, this is what we're spending it on. We, you can buy all kinds of equipment.
What else do you need besides the milling head? If you're going to use your own labor, obviously you have to buy the material, but what else do you?
So it's a, the milling head is sixteen inches. So it's a, the milling head is sixteen inches wide. We can utilize one of our, uh, six-wheel dump trucks with a chute on the back that's got a conveyor to, to pump that asphalt out into that milled area and then we just.
We use tools though, for, is that like any additional tools?
We have a roller, we have a roller, I've been here since twenty twenty, I haven't seen it used once, it's sitting up in him in the hill, because we don't have the capability to do a big project like that. If we did, then the roller comes out and we can roll that out instead of using a, uh, right now, a hand compactor. To, yeah, to do the potholes, you'll see it out there when we're out there, but if we're doing a bigger project, we'll absolutely bring the roller out for it.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we bought that expensive trackless device, right, so that we can do multifunction work on it.
I believe there's like twenty-five different attachments you can buy for that.
Good.
Start with.
We already have.
We want three. Start with another one.
What's the better, the snow blower, what else is there?
Uh, V flow. One thing that does go along with that milling head, which would be included in the cost, is it needs a, uh, a watering system on the back of the machine to keep the dust down, have you doing that?
About ten grand or?
So, I mean, hey, I, I'm, I'm sure, I don't wanna, you've got more on the slides, keep going, I was just. I think this is the last one. This is a really good foundation job, so thank you. I think, when I look at this though, when we think about supplemental funding, capital, things like that, I would wanna see now more scenario-driven, what could be done? If we were to dip in, you're gonna hate this, I know, table station, a one-time stabilization dip, so I think when we go in and we look for two fifty, and generally, everybody wants to spend money on roads more often. The question is, if we were to increase supplemental funding or what are our options? So what does it mean? I think, Jason, your idea of, let's, let's borrow that, uh, borrow that piece and proof of concept to demonstrate, it makes sense for us to buy it. That'd be a great way to demonstrate, you know, ROI before we even purchase it, but what if we increased our supplemental funding by different degrees? How does this schedule change or how do you bring those roads in?
We come up with degrees, I will come up with a roadmap for how we're gonna spend them.
What would be, what would be too disruptive? What is, what is, what's the upper bound in terms of how much we can reasonably do?
Right, there is a.
Really? So if we came out with five million dollars?
You, you depend on contract, like, get a contractor that comes in here and you say, I'm gonna spend five million dollars, they'll spend the whole summer.
The sky's the limit. But are there like bigger, so you know, if you back these slides up, these are small to medium size goals, right? Is there like a, you know, if we are able to supplement like a, that, what was the seven hundred and fifty? That was reck, reck, reclaiming all of Wood Drive, right? But if there's some other large job that you can finish end to end as opposed to patches, like, does that make a difference to, to how the road is done? Like, and we talked earlier about seams, so if we're doing sections of roads every three to five years, those seams must show.
Seams are going to happen.
So like, is there some?
There is a seam.
Value doing a road end to end.
There is.
Of, you, you're not running into those seams. Not plowing over them during the winter.
If our focus for capital was roads, we wanted to say, Jeremy, every year we wanna propose putting thirty percent of free cash towards roadwork. And then what kind of timeframe do we make a dent in the schedule? That's sort of a scenario I would like to see. You know what I mean?
Like, what are we at? Um, that very first slide was like thirty percent or?
Right, thirty-two.
So like, if we have a goal in there of knocking that down to twenty percent.
Five years, we, like, we committed to a three-year supplemental of two fifty year, because we didn't know, we didn't know, we didn't know at the time. And we did thirty-three years, it'll be on the warrant in November, um, we might do, so it, I think it'll pass, so we'll go three years. What if we say now, like, a five-year timeframe, like, five-year business plan on roads? What can we get done and what are the varying levels of funding required to get optimal mid-range, you know what I mean? What does that start to look like? So I, I will say, looking at this plan that I put in place for the next three years, that is knocking off the majority of our main roads and what we are, from a cost benefit value standpoint, once we get past those, we're looking at a lot of smaller side roads that need to be done.
But you still have wear and tear, you know.
Yeah, so there is, there is preventative maintenance, and one of the things that I didn't put in here, because I'm still trying to figure out, what I wanna do is Hartford Avenue West was done five years ago, and recommendations from a lot of the, uh, companies out there is after you do something within five, at that five-year mark, you should be doing some sort of preventive maintenance where, whether it's another sealant on top, it would be the same thing for Neck Hill Road and Daniels. I'm gonna be looking to do something to those because I don't.
You don't want it to degrade.
I don't want them to degrade. If we put this sealant on top, you just bought us another five years on that road.
Right, so.
Off of it.
Still in five years, that includes maintenance as well as.
As well as minor rehabilitation, right, so what is the five-year road, I mean, this is, this is good, extended a couple of years, I guess, but it's three years from today. Then whatever, what are our funding?
Yeah, so, you know, if we've got two million, give or take, in, in free cash, we're putting two hundred fifty thousand, we're already at, you know, fifteen percent. Um, and I will say, as we look to fund, look to implement and fund, um, the Collin Center Compensation Classification, we'll be taking some of those structural surpluses that I've been talking about that have driven free cash and programming them back into the operating budget to be able to fund that sort of thing. So expectations for free cash after fiscal twenty-six, so right now, it's kind of at, a little bit's been programmed back in, and that's how we have four hundred thousand dollars to open in spring. Um, but fiscal twenty-seven going forward, at least through the life of the contract, um, without some other economic change, we should probably expect lower free cash. So to do two hundred fifty thousand, maybe more than the fifteen percent that we have now, we may be talking, that may be our thirty percent of free cash.
Okay. Mike, did you have something to say?
Just that, when I look at that, the eleven point six million number sticks out to me, the estimated cost right now to do everything that you would need to do. And the idea is if you can increase those maintenance costs every five years, you, you could potentially drive that.
But that cost will go down and our RSR rating is gonna go up.
Yeah, because the SR rating going up actually makes that cost to do everything. And that would be the key is, the more you can put in now, the more you're gonna drive that total number down.
Right, but just like.
Just make the quality of life better for, because we're not gonna be rattling our teeth out all up.
I just wanna point out, so this estimated cost for repairs is eleven point six million dollars. When we had this pavement management study done in twenty twenty-three, they were estimating road repairs as somewhere in ten million dollar range. We did two of the major roads that are still up to eleven point six currently, so it just shows that cost of doing.
It's gonna be big now.
Yeah, I think what's important is, I think, we've kind of got our hands around what the problem is. Starting to get, um, creative with financing or increasing the finance to deal with the problem. I would say debt financing might be a way to, I mean, I look at this, is that, I would rather see us try to hit the roads hard sooner than later and then see a decrease in spend on roadways because we're kind of getting past the bigger problems.
Right.
Um, so how do, and as I go back to Jeremy's thing, what are, what's our, what's our, what are our financial options? It may, it may not be there, but I think it's important to put it forward because I'm sure I'm not the only one listening to this discussion, thinking, how do we get it done faster, so the more we can, I think this is great, I post this, it's just good for people to see online. But then, what's that next scenario of different view of possibilities, right? And that way, if we choose to do debt financing, this for road repair, like a capital debt finance project, people aren't gonna be surprised by it, they're gonna see why we did it, or why we're suggesting it based on.
And in that sense, we would have to have a very specific, the, these are the, yeah, two point seven five miles of road we're doing on this one, the very, very specific in terms of what the bond authorization is.
I think, so, again, I go back to this number where it's not adding up, if, if what I'm looking at is correct, I'm gonna push Bellingham Street to FY twenty-six and try and redo it in the spring. Because we will have the funding for it.
To accelerate the whole.
No, but I'm gonna accelerate everything.
Right, so the more funding you get, you now see what's sort of laid out. More than likely, basically, because it's conservative estimates, John, on your part, you're not gonna push these roads further out. The only direction it could go with increased funding, you might pull them in. Is that fair?
Got a hand up.
I know, I'm waiting for you guys to finish. Uh, is this, uh, Finance Committee, Carl?
Nope, this is Carl Hummel, fifteen Misco Road, with input on this topic.
Sir, give us your two minutes.
Okay, I took a screenshot of your second slide and followed along as you went over the three-year plans and it, I agree that you are very correctly looking at the red roads that are providing through traffic as someone who lives on Misco Road, which you correctly identified as one of the worst in town. I'd also look at the country roads like mine, look at the building permits and look at the other activity that's being scheduled, and that may raise the priority. One of the reasons Misco Road deteriorated quite badly the past six months is that someone did a logging plan up at the top of the hill. There is already an outstanding building permit, uh, on the road. When someone pulls the trigger on that, they're going to be going up and down with a whole lot of dump trucks and fill. I'm looking to do an ADU and I would have a similar thing. So when you're looking at the, the rural dead-end roads, look at the potential heavy use with dump trucks and things going in to prioritize them. And yes, if you come forward with the, the milling option of thirty-five thousand capital expense, yeah, that sounds like a great idea if we can patch the worst parts of, uh, of, uh, Misco Road or, or Wood Street or the other ones.
Thanks for comments. Um, yeah, I mean, do, I just wanna, like, on Providence, do we put in a different type of pavement? Because we know that we have all those stone trucks going down, or is it like the pavement's all the same?
Providence, so typically your main roads are asphalt.
Okay.
As opposed to a chipstone.
Uh, just heavier duty, sticks together more.
I mean, asphalt is the best that you can do. And like I said, there are other treatments that are caught more toss effective, and I got a question about that with Northbridge and Millville last year, why I did one asphalt and one chipstone?
And it's just traffic, weight.
It's traffic and, you know, the, this particular resident questioned me on why I did that, and he didn't think it was the right solution for the road, and I looked at him and I said, that was on there before, it was the same thing that was on there before, it was a chip seal, they had done twice. And we just did it again after re-gluing everything, and he's like, I didn't realize that, I'm like, you have to give the stone time to, to wear itself in, and then it's a smooth wear surface.
And we're not just oiling it from the stone down. So, uh, all right, so excellent, I think some really good stuff came out of that. I think we definitely have some stuff to talk about during budget time. Um, and so this is really informative for that, do you wanna?
I was, are you, are you planning on posting this on, on the website? I can.
Yeah.
I think it'd be really interesting for the town to have access to, and it's very clear and easy to read, so.
Absolutely can.
All right, so if there's no more comments, thanks for your time tonight, appreciate it. Oh, you gotta get up early and I want you to leave.
Yeah, John.
Um, all righty, so, uh, as soon as John leaves the stage, we will bring up the General Bylaw Committee. Mr. Tom Rowley is here to talk about, um, updates from the General Bylaw Committee.
As Tom comes up, I just wanted to say one thing, James Statch, who has worked with FEMA and on, uh, Coast Guard, uh, for messaging that rap funding is tied to federally declared disasters. So when the federal government declares a winter disaster, that's when rap funding. So thank you for that, James.
Awesome.
Hey, guys, how are you?
Hello, sir, welcome.
Good. So the General Bylaw Review Committee had three, um, bylaws that we've approved to send to the Select Board, or referred to the Select Board, rather, to put on the November Town Meeting warrant. Uh, one of which, Jeremy informs me, we don't need to do because.
Because we already did it.
But I just wanted to be clear, um, I was told that even though they approved it, the actual motion we passed at the last town meeting didn't do anything.
Which one is this?
The gender neutral.
The gender neutral language one, I was told that the motion because it, uh, basically it was an instruction to change the bylaws to be gender neutral, it doesn't actually change the bylaws though.
Yeah, so it was approved by the Attorney General, so I guess, uh, I, I didn't realize it was gonna be on, on your recommendation now.
Yeah.
I'll pass this out before the meeting.
Well, if the Attorney General approved a bylaw that doesn't do anything.
That, that's, that's, the, the motion just said to instructed the town to change the, but, I just, I always wanna make sure it's actually, it's so, is that covered? We good, are we good on that one?
Uh, we need a redlined version of the bylaws, which we have.
Okay.
We had, we had our intern do it this summer and I reviewed, um, I will, I will check with council, like I said, I didn't realize it was going to be on here, so I'll check, I'll put the placeholder on it now, and then I'll check with council to see about the necessity, I have a call with her one day.
If, if we don't have to, if we don't have to, I'm happy to, obviously, I don't want.
Thursday is the close.
Right.
So we'll put the placeholder.
If you want to put the placeholder in. Um, then the other two, um, we have one, I sent you from, uh, Ian Mazur and the Land Use Committee in coordination with the, um, GBRC, um, to update the Community Preservation Act Chapter. I sent that to you as well, um, basically adding an alternate member, um, at large to be appointed in case of an absence or disability of any of the, the CPA members. And, and also increasing the, uh, membership of the, that the CPA draws from, or, or the CPC draws from, to book land use committee, the Select Board, the Parks Commission. And then changes the, if nobody's appointed within the allotted time, um, replaces the town moderator to appoint their replacement with the Select Board instead.
And, and this is just because of sometimes it's critical and that is necessary, or is this just, uh, sort of a just in case?
This is just, this is a just in case, this is a, you know, um.
But it could be critical if there.
Could be critical, yeah.
Sort of thinking like last minute CPC allocation and, you know, somebody's not around and, you know, just trying to figure out what is that designed for in an, an emergency.
Right, exactly. Um, so that's more or less a cleanup, making the bylaw a little better. The other one is actually a, um, was in coordination with, uh, Alan Agro, the Town Clerk. Um, this is actually a requirement foisted upon us by the state um, to update our animal control, um, special provision of our bylaw. To, in accordance with the law passed at the state level called Ollie's Law. So this one, um, it, it mainly focuses on kennels, you wanna go down a bit? Um, so it adds, you know, a definition for what is considered a kennel. It, it, based upon the state guidelines, um, it changes, just to be more clear, the license authority, licensing authority changes from being just the clerk to the town clerk for purposes of license issuance and the Select Board for purposes of determining the conditions, investigation, suspension and rip vacation. Um, you know, the reason for this will be clear later on, if you wanna continue. Um, it, it updates licensing substantially. Um, for example, then there's a new definition for licensee, uh, for kennel license holders. I wanna go down a little bit, that's just updating some language. Um, so the big thing is, no license, kennel license can be issued or renewed until there's an inspection by the Animal Control Officer. So if somebody had a kennel before, they could, they had to be, um, inspected once, and then that license could be renewed. inspected once, and then that license could be renewed if the Select Board chose to. Now, every time they go up for renewal, they will need a new inspection. Also, you know, it used to be that owner of a personal kennel could just get a kennel license, and so they wouldn't have to get a license for each and every dog. That's no longer the case. And a licensed kennel, every dog, six months of age or older, would have to have their own dog license with those puppies being six months or younger being exempt from that. That's also a new change. Also, the licensing authority, meaning you guys, will have to, at the time, specify the type of kennel and the maximum number of animals and other things such as the.
Isn't this something that we argued out last year, right? And then made a decision on for sizing, it's just the.
I don't think the bylaw spells all that out.
The bylaw.
The state does. I'm just trying to catch up.
Yeah, the state, the state, yeah, this is, this is based on a law passed by the state that's requiring towns to do this. And then also, there's new specific penalties for violations of the kennel bylaw. There's injury reporting and investigation requirements, as well as requirements of reporting kennels to the state that weren't in place before. But basically, animal injuries to animals or people now need to be reported directly to the Select Board. They have an.
Just, I just want to ask if you were clear, all of these changes are basically mandated state changes.
Correct.
So this is just putting our bylaw in line with what the state.
That is, that is correct. And there's a certain period of time that we have to bring ours, because this passed in 2024. They gave towns time to catch up, right? They were approaching the time that we have to catch up, so it's crucial that this gets done.
As a chairman, it sounds like what you just commented on, they were talking about the state law and us not be right with it, and now this will make us up to the.
Correct. And so the final changes are actual penalties go down the bottom. There are new statutory penalties foisted upon those who don't obtain a kennel license. It's $500 for a first offense and $1,000 for a second or subsequent offense. And then, like, for revoked licenses, 250, 500, or 1,500 for a third offense. Also, the final thing is for kennels that are causing a nuisance as defined by 25 citizens of the town staying there aggrieved or annoyed to the extent that constitutes a nuisance by a dog in a kennel. The Select Board has to actually perform an investigation, public hearing, and remedial order directly for kennel news, separate of the already laid out. Separate of the already laid out process to finding a dog quote-unquote nuisance.
Who do they file that with? Who do they notify of the nuisance? Before, how would we know?
Well, I would imagine if 25 citizens signed a petition.
You know that?
Is that what it is? They're, oh, right, they're filing petition. Okay, and that would be filed with the town clerk.
Yeah, that might be.
We know about it.
Yeah, we know about it if it were 25.
Where did the dollar amounts come from in those fines?
Those came directly from the Acts of 2024 as passed by the state.
Interesting. I mean, that, like, there are dollar amounts in the bylaw that, I don't know.
Yeah.
Sort of surprising to me because, I mean.
They're so low.
Well, I think just because it's, it's like the bylaws are like fixed for a certain amount of time and fees and fines are.
Yeah, we're going to think, talk about that eventually.
The question is, are those, is that a floor? So can the town actually?
Not less than.
So the town, so the town can actually do more.
There's some is not less than and some is not more than.
And not more than.
Yes, it's going to be a store and a stealing.
Fine you 1,600 for the second.
So, I mean, given Elena's point, I mean, why wouldn't this just reference a schedule of fees, something like that, that's more updatable?
Or we do that all at once, or?
Right, we have a lot of schedules of fees. We have to talk about the schedule of fees in general, because we need to update all of the bylaws to say, reference our schedule of fees. Then we actually have to decide on that schedule.
This is a good first start, because it's, it's basically.
I think if we're.
State's fire.
Yeah, I mean, just because if we then go to schedule fees, I'm going to have to update this bylaw again.
So if we're doing this, why don't we go to the, our preferred method?
You know, I mean, I just think it's great to, if the, if the, if the state passed it in 2024, that we already had one time when we've been at odds with it, putting this in place the way it is now, with this, at the, at the special, at least gets us in line with the state, and we can always go back and.
Yeah, wait, yeah, so you put an additional line at the end of subsequent offense and say, you know.
Eyes into the schedule, whatever schedule.
Yeah, I wouldn't want the town to adopt a bylaw that's referring to the schedule of fees.
And there's no schedule of fees in place. Right.
And also, we did that once. It didn't work out very well.
And then I also wouldn't want the bylaw to be passed where it says licensing operation penalties, and then there'd be no penalty in there whatsoever. So I guess probably not a deal, but pass it, my suggestion would be to pass it with dollar amount in here and then do kind of a cleanup note sort of thing where you go through and change all the bylaws to reference schedule, and then you have the schedules.
I guess what's good about this is it actually gives the town officials and the dog officer, everybody else, actually gives them someplace to go and something to do. Rather, without this, it makes it more difficult.
Much more difficult, because the last conversation went on for quite a bit of time.
This way, it's just, there it is. And then when somebody calls, you know, you can, well, here's the bylaw. Look at this and make sure that you are in compliance. And the only difference is how much, how much of the penalties.
Yeah, and to be clear, these are separate of the penalties for non-kennel offenses, which are referenced elsewhere in the bylaw, so. That's why that they're kind of in their own section. Like, a lot of what the state's trying to do is kind of take, what they're trying to do is they're trying to crack down on unlicensed kennels, people who kind of like are operating as, hey, I just have a, I have a bunch of dogs. You know, and I happen to sell a bunch out of my, like, you know, stuff like that. And the thought is that kind of regimenting this will help crack down on that. And so that's.
Currently a fine for licensed kennel operations in the bylaw.
Yeah, or there was, but it was.
But some people were getting kennel licenses to cover their dogs instead of getting individual licenses.
Right, if five dogs, they get a kennel.
Right, if you get an individual license, you're forced to prove that each dog has a rabies vaccination and.
Yeah, right. And also, there is a section of personal kennels versus, you know, commercial kennels.
As a board, we don't really have an action here. This is just, you're giving us information, but if town council says this aligns to the current state statute, we're good to go, right?
More or less, yeah. I mean, we can choose to gamble and not take this action.
Want to say, like.
Actually, I actually have a question about the definition of a kennel in here. I know when I apply for a dog license, the town clerk application says if you have more than four dogs to apply for a kennel license. Is that defined anywhere in here?
Can you go up to definitions?
Yeah, I just don't see more than four dogs. Just.
I think there's, I think there's one for a personal kennel. Kennel, a packer collection of dogs on a single premises, including a commercial boring.
It doesn't define a pack. It's on eight. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Personal kennel.
Yeah.
Just making sure that.
Yeah, I know, they, they have.
What number do you read that?
It's 8.12.
All right, well, that's not, that's not in the document I have here.
Yeah, it says a dog off the premises of its own keeper.
Hold on. I know it's in there.
It's right before the license takes out, 8.12.
Eight point.
Not one point, but it's 8.12.
That's 1.2.
So a different dog.
Which, three months old is different from six months old or something.
Right.
The six month was for the commercial. That's probably if you're raising dogs.
Yeah.
You don't have to pay all those fees for, to get that dog, if you're going to sell it.
Yeah. Other than that, that's, that's what I got.
So I saw in here we changed, or the suggestion to change something from the clerk to the Select Board.
I think that was.
A decision about something?
Well, that, that's because we were changing the changing the licensing authority from the clerk, because the clerk's already the licensing authority for dog licenses. But since the Select Board gets more involved in the process, for instance, like hearings on kennels, there, we had essentially had to create two different licensing authorities, and then that definition that's laid out is it's the clerk for some things and the Select Board for others. So I think that was because that particular thing required the Select Board to lay in on.
Is that near the state law?
Well, I think it's, I had to go through and mirror the state law based on what the actual licensing authority was at the, at the time and which, which was the clerk.
Now you're recommended to change, change the kennel licensing from the clerk.
Well, because that's, that's, that piece is required by the state, but I'm not going to take away the licensing authority from the clerk for, say, you know, for dog licensing in general, because.
Yeah, because we, because if you did that, we would just delegate it to the, to the town.
And then you would be.
He would just issue all of the dog license.
So essentially, I had to create two different, two different licensing authorities.
That makes sense. And so this is a good batch for the first, for the second.
Well done.
Time, so I think that the committee's been successful, but you didn't lose a member.
We did. So now we're, now we're at four, so you better hope that we don't get any arguments, because.
We split it down the middle.
We'll be split down the middle.
So if anybody is still listening and wants to join the.
General Bylaw.
General Bylaw Review Committee, the position is open and posted on the website. And yeah, so I think that's about it. Does the board have any more discussion items for Mr. Rowley? Thanks for coming out tonight and joining us. Really appreciate it. See you at special town meeting.
You would especially, well, before then, probably.
All right. Let me just check what I hit. All right, so speaking of town meeting, let's have number 13, Tom, meeting discussion.
All right, I'm going to share my screen here. So I'm going to do the same thing I did for annual town meeting and kind of write a short explainer. So what we'll do is create the warrant as people are accustomed to filling it, getting a group of them today. And then at the bottom have two, both QR codes and links. That'll take people to this, because it's going to be, you know, 15 plus pages. And I don't want to mail that to everybody. I just want to mail two pages. And then, so they'll be able to navigate to this on the website. We'll have hard copies around Town Hall and at Town Meeting. And the other link is for redlined versions of the bylaw changes. So folks will be able to go, Dan Byers set up a page on our website, so you'll be able to go in and see redlined versions of the bylaw.
Can I ask you guys to see if you can track views on those links so that we can see how many people are accessing?
Sure.
Town report for the first time in forever. Yeah, okay, that would be really awesome to report on at post-meeting to just like, to just see how many people are checking in.
Just going to be Dan and I clicking on it 14 times.
Yeah, we'd like to know who.
Everybody gets a personal QR.
I kicked off Google AdSense for it. So I changed the colors to green. Tom's joke about please turn your clickers three times is still in here. All right, so what I'm going to do, I'm going to go through, I don't have all the commentary in here. I need some input from some other folks. But I'm going to just go through what, what is on here, and unless you want to interject, discuss it further, or say, you know, don't want that, why is that on there? The first three are same as, same as they typically are, bills of a prior year, have reached out to council, Katie talks national grid today on those particular bills. So we're seeing that she kicked it over to her person who does that there.
See if we don't have to pay.
Yeah, but the oldest bill we have is July, or January of 2024, and they billed us in July of 2025. And then all of calendar year '24, and we haven't gotten anything from '23. They said they're not going to get anything from '23.
They'll, she'll let me know by Friday if we're going to get further.
Weird that they don't know.
I mean, are they, they going to file what happened in the back of the building?
What are they going to do?
No. And so that was one of my questions to council was like, I don't, how do, what do I verify this against, right?
Right, if our meter wasn't running, there's nothing to even check.
Stabilization fund, so a $200,000 contribution gets, well, actually, before I start this, because, so I have been asking accounting for a few weeks. So I said earlier before we picked the town meeting date, can we have free cash certified by the end of September? They said yes. So I've been asking them for about a week and a half now, can I have free cash number, can I have free cash number? They said today he was going to reconfigure his schedule, so he'll be able to get me an estimate and then submit to DOR tomorrow. Which was a little frustrating in that I thought submission already happened. Submission kind of takes up to a week or two, sometimes more, especially when everyone's trying to get in now. Only 97 municipalities have submitted their free cash certification. So the estimate is about $2 million from, from accounting right now. I thought it was 1.5 million on the high side, that I've been talking about since Q3 kind of, but 2 million. So I don't have any of the breakdown. I don't know what's closing of grant funds. I had a pretty good sense on the expenditure side, so it must be, you know, revenue over performance. We do have a historic trend of kind of lagging, actually getting our revenue posted into our ledger on Springbrook. So even if it's been, you know, the batch has been entered and, you know, the cash is in the bank, I don't always see it in Springbrook in real time. So I think that probably had a lag to it, which is.
To get you on track, is there any discussion about updating that whole software scenario?
So it's, it's not a software issue. It's a, when it gets entered by the staff who needs to enter it, which is the accounting staff. So that's, it's, there's no issue with software. It's just we got to take the time to do it.
You run through this document, it's just using the 1.5 estimate you've been talking about for 2 million.
Yeah, so I didn't have, I don't have a running tab of what free cash would be in here. I plan to, but I've sported adjacent, but I got the $2 million number at like 5:30 today or something.
So I didn't know when you were thinking about how much for stabilization that, do you have 1.5 in your head?
Yeah, exactly. So we did 300,000 last year, and I wanted to get a number. So the financial policies that all present after personnel policies say stabilization account balance from 7% to 10% of general fund expenditures. And $200,000 got us over that 7% hump, so I was kind of conservative in what we had available, I guess there. And also, as we go through some of these, I met with Capital yesterday, two members are on here. I met with Capital yesterday, and we didn't have that. So there was the sense that we didn't want to recommend everything and put it on here where we could do some of it at annual town meeting in the spring and not be much worse off for a six-month lag in doing.
I think service, good.
That was, that was the approach I suggested to Capital, and they, they went along with it as well. So $200,000 into stabilization gets us into that 7% range. And again, even though we hit the range, we could, we can move up in it, but it requires a yearly contribution as our, as our budget grows. Capital expenditure account, I link the appendix A's to, so people can get here and see what I'm talking about, why we can only do 100,000. And then this brings us up to about $535,000 in the fund. And then I telegraph here, uh, it's a way to keep borrowing lower for the Providence Street Culver project, which I'll get to again in a little bit. Um, on here after capital last night. Um, OPEP, I need the newest liability figure. It's a few million dollars. Last year we did $50,000, um, and, uh, the way I talked about it, um, I don't have a number in here. The way I talked about it previously was the growth from that $50,000, talk about that as our baseline. The growth from year to year should be at least as big as our budgetary growth year to year. Uh, so it'll be some number larger than $50,000 around it, because we shouldn't put in $51,726 or whatever, like, um, we'll save $55,000. Um, I do have a lot that's on the consent agenda here. Um, it will be noted right after the, the article. Um, any ones that I thought were a little bit either less than straightforward or, um, uh, needed, possibly controversial or needed some more explanation, I didn't put on the consent agenda. So this is fire department leases. We talked about it at this board before, uh, stuff that wasn't captured. This request, um, since new growth came in over estimates, this request is not going to be using free cash. This will use new growth and appropriate that into this line, um, as a reflection of the fact that these, this is a recurring expense. At least the largest one is multi-year recurring expense, so I wouldn't want to stick one time revenue there. I want to use those. Um, there is a board of assessors meeting either last night or tonight, um, where there's not something on here yet. I need to put a hold. I was just reminded, um, if they need additional, um, funds in their overlay account. So they're reserved for abatements and exemptions. As the tax base grows, your exposure to abatements and exemptions, um, and appeals and whatnot, uh, grows as well. So they need to continue to grow that overlay account and we didn't additionally appropriate, um, or raise in the spring town meeting. Um, so we may need to do it here. They were gonna kind of run their, their, run through their own numbers.
Did they think some of the, some of the articles they passed the spring about increasing veteran abatements and things that have an effect, right?
Yep. They do. Um, this is the ABCC that we talked about, the combining, the upgrading the license. It would create an opportunity, not an obligation. Flood hazard overlay district, um, the definitions section was to comport with FEMA and NEMA. Um, this, the town planner has gone over this with council and NEMA a handful of times already. So any bylaw table of uses, um, I don't have a great definition of this here. Dylan and I are gonna meet next week. Um, I don't, I don't have the redlined version of this, uh, but it's kind of a housekeeping item where you make sure it comports with the rest of what's in your bylaws. Open space communities by law and site plan review, um, council said we can put both of these into one, uh, because they kind of address the same process. It cleans up a bit of the, um, uh, how, how it gets from one step to the next as possible. Um, again, planning board sponsoring these, and I'll have the commentary written by the town planner. Um, this is something that I've run up against a handful of times in town, which is, um, kind of the content neutral, the lack of content neutral language, um, around signage. Um, and the building commissioner upon my advice and upon advice of council has not been enforcing this bylaw. I'm on the assumption that we'll lose on appeal, um, pretty immediately. Uh, so this just gets us to where the US Supreme Court says we should be. Uh, ADU, uh, sort of follow up, uh, the law, the part of the laws that was not challenged by the AGO did go into effect. So, um, the current, the local regulations like on special permit up to 1,200 square feet and applying to all our other setbacks and all the other requirements are in place. Um, we just have to fix our, mostly our parking, um, stuff that's in there. Um, so that, that work's kind of completed. Common driveway and flag bylaw, flag lot bylaw, um, I don't have that yet. Dylan, uh, town planner was working with council and I believe someone at CMRPC on this. I'm not sure where this one's at. Uh, but this was, um, and zoning by law review committee, um, this came out of this, these are, these two both came out of the, um, zoning by law review committee. That should not be there. That is not gonna be.
I was gonna ask, and I'm like, I'm like, I'm pretty sure that's gonna have some discussion.
Um, highway jump truck request.
What does it mean, flag lot?
People call pork chop lots too, where you have a big chunk.
With the shape.
A little, a little bit of frontage, so it's like skinny and then.
Yeah.
Like, like the flags at the top, you know?
But like, like a pork chop.
Yeah.
Pork chop.
More extended.
I, yeah, I think they refer to the same situation that maybe it just sounds a tad more professional to not call it pork chop.
Or L shaped, you know?
Yeah, minimal frontage lots, but, um, I have one of them, but I got an exemption because town needed a easement, so they, but it's different.
Do you know?
And other than different towns. Um, highway dump truck classification. So in our general fund, we have $56,000 a year that we appropriate for lease payment, eight years worth of lease payments for a multipurpose dump truck and a trackless, the trackless we were talking about before. In annual town meeting, article thirteen in twenty twenty three, there was $75,000 appropriated, um, to create a fund to lease a trackless and multipurpose dump truck and to allow the select board to engage in an eight year lease for same thing. We, so $75,000 is just a year and a half worth of those payments. So I don't know if this was intended to be the first year or a bridge between when we, we knew we're gonna have the payments and not the general fund up, public or budget ready. I'm, I'm not sure of its genesis, um, but it's been sitting there since twenty twenty three and we budgeted this money in the general fund. So we have a couple of options. Uh, you could close it back out, um, to it's, I think it was from stabilization, so you can close it back out to stabilization. On the highway, um, uh, capital plan is a request for a dump truck for the grounds foreman. So right now they kind of swap trucks as they needed and, and what are you doing today? What am I doing today? Um, this would be a, you know, they're looking for a dump truck specific for the grounds foreman to do his day to day work. Um, so what this article, the way I considered it, some input here, it would be to, um, reauthorize, um, the, the vote to say, instead of using it for the lease payments and stuff that we're already doing lease payments for, to purchase this new vehicle for the grounds foreman. Um, and I wouldn't put.
Would the vehicle be way more than $75,000?
Uh, we have a quote for, um, a, is it an aluminum body one in like the high eighties? John wanted to get a steel body.
Like a smaller, like an F two fifty or something?
Yeah, it's not the big international like a hundred.
I was imagining giant plow.
We, we reorganize, that's what parks do, but to do the grounds work that, and what did they use to do the work? I mean, the work had to change.
So they've, they've got an F two fifty with the trailer on it.
Yeah.
Um, and now we have, you know, and that's what the kind of seasonal folks were, folks using around. Um, and then the foreman who has his own work that he does too. Um, in order to support those ground folks, they were using other dump trucks that Harley already has. And then they were taking current highway guys on, you know, on the highway crew and doubling them up into, into a different.
So we're buying a vehicle for the foreman. But isn't this, but isn't this gonna replace one? It's not.
This is new. This is, this, this is not, we added a body and this would be adding a truck to go along with that. I should, we should have, I should have.
I think it should be, yeah, restated that much more clearly that that's what we're doing. It's, it's easier to comprehend that we're, you know, we're restapping it therefore.
Dan was a defective foreman for grounds.
Um, I think he uses personal vehicle. He was sometimes in the, he was in the pickup truck once the seasonal folks were.
So, so I mean, to me, this is one of those things, like one of those unanticipated costs with the reorganization that we never discussed, which is not a small dollar figure. Yeah, it'd be a little more thorough, I think, when we do these things, because, you know, it's easier to say. Yeah, but it never came up. Right. I'm just saying the due diligence, when you think about organizational change, there's a lot. Getting down to the needing grading is, this is not insignificant. Sorry. Did you find any kind of written documentation about the, where that seventy five was? You know, the, the reason why it was put there, because my, my memory was, it was, it was gonna replace money that was supposed to replace something that we weren't out. They usually get put there without some reason.
Was it related to them then getting the, the old fire pickup truck and then there?
It's something to do with the old fire pickup truck and then even this, this trackless that we bought is something to the replacement of that.
And why, and like, why would we do this here instead of budgeting it? Getting it ready. Is it because it's like an immediate need?
Oh, might have done it. It might have been done.
No, like, why would we, uh?
This was in the fall, SBA.
It was, this was in May, so May of twenty three. May of twenty three, vote to transfer from stabilization to lease and to authorize select board to enter into an eight year lease. Um, and we, we paid for this out of the general fund right now. Like I said, it's $75,000 gets us a year and a half worth of lease payments. So I, that's what John asked me. He's like, should I go ahead and just use this to pay for the lease payments? And then use my $56,000 to go do kind of all this stuff that I want to do on the general fund? Said, no, like, let's be purposeful about how we want to do this rather than spend fifty six on consumables.
The fact that it came out of stabilization with this new article, the past two thirds, because you're repurposing stabilization fund?
Good question for.
We're gonna go put it back in stabilization because we're reversing, we don't need that for stabilization and reauthorize the need for a new truck for the form, you know what I mean?
Right.
Yeah, is it back in new or is it just reauthorizing? I, I know on a, on a city basis, we've reauthorized what the use of a fund is when, in our legislature, the, the city council would say, you know, we couldn't buy the twenty twenty four explorer because it was sold out or whatever, so we'll get the twenty twenty five for explorer and we gotta change the vote that offers the fund.
The, the, the thing, I don't, I don't want to make it look like we're playing a shell game. I'd rather put the seventy five back into stabilization because that's what we took a fund for a specific purpose. And maybe you're putting hundred, like, uh, free cash from stabilization. From previous article, like capital, take free cash to buy it. I just want to make sure nobody's still gonna say, you know, shell game, I just want to get into that sort of discussion. Say we took one out of stabilization two years ago. It was not expendable. We're putting it back in.
So this and all of the other capital that's on here was recommended by the capital planning committee last night to be included in the warrant. So I didn't include anything.
I'm, I'm more talking about how the funding is happening, not that we're not, we're not doing it, you know what I mean? I just, do you get into an explanation for, we took this out of stabilization two years ago. We never spent on funds. I was just raising, saying, why aren't we putting it back to stabilization?
It is more transparent to list it out very detailed like that.
Two step.
So to put it back in the stabilization and then if this is something we want to do, we need three fraction period of it.
Yeah, also, we have $2 million for cash.
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, I, I.
I just don't remember it being, or any kind of at least, it should have been almost like it got.
But that, that looks, that's the wording. Well, yeah, this was some of the ones that was a very long discussion about the trackless. I remember the, the meeting going on for a bit, so.
And we have had a, uh, I think we have had past practices where we allocate something for a lease, but somehow it gets into the general fund or vice versa. So I think this is more of a, just sort of the practice.
Because it's, you know, so small, right? If this was like 500 and something thousand dollars, I'd be, oh, you meant all eight years to go right here. But this is, like I said, just over a year. So I'm thinking it was like a, uh, you know, you thought you were going to have a lease payment due before June thirtieth.
Yes, it was gonna be the first payment.
And really you were able to wait until July one, so you had the budget.
Then we ended up buying trackless instead.
We leased it. We, we.
Okay, we did lease.
Eight, eight year capital lease.
That's what.
And then we own it at the end.
Feels like forming vehicle could be a candidate for EV as well. So is that part of the EV study or should it be?
There's a special set of those EVs with the two dumpers. We, we saw them at the, yeah. And so, I mean, all, it, it would depend on how, like, they're using it for, what the weight is.
My only concern about the EV, the phone truck is I think the plan is that that truck would be used as an additional plow truck.
Yeah, that it would need.
And then it just, with the cold weather, just. Stay the plan, because we're gonna do an EV study for a musical fleet.
Yep.
One might ask, but why are you buying that gas? Let's make sure we have the ice dotted and.
Yeah, yeah. If he knows what the foreman's gonna be using it for, uh, regularly and we can state that, it's just very.
The discussion, discussion, we, when, when we spoke this morning, we looked at highway surveying was that, you know, he's struggling to get contractors to do plowing. It's much easier if you have another truck, just put, put somebody in the seat. And there's issues with liability insurance or.
Do we need to purchase, if he's gonna use the plow, do we need to purchase a plow right now along with it? So is there more money we should be putting into it so we can outfit it? Like, those are things we just, you can do it all at once.
Yeah, we can pay that out of snow and ice.
But I think the plowing rationale makes this a no brainer as well. So it's not, this, not just for a foreman to get to do their day to day. It's, it's a multipurpose vehicle, part of the highway fleet.
And as you talked about difficulty with contractors, so to get a snowplow contractor, you need to carry about a million dollars worth of insurance. That costs about $1,500 and if you only plow four or five times, it doesn't work. As opposed to if we have additional, so what we also have, we have our own staff drive our trucks. We have contractors to drive their trucks. And then we also bring in, we pay staff, we pay folks hourly to drive our trucks. Right. And that's the kind of sweet spot, um, that, you know, we're already, we're already insuring everything. It's our truck and we have to pay you 30 bucks an hour to go out and drive our truck. Um, and it's, it's easier to find people to do that than it is contractors come in there. Uh, I will get more detail on the highway spare. We didn't talk much about this, uh, uh, before this week, really. Um, so I'll have a, I'll have.
Cleaner ass say, put this money back. Oh, we got this deep, right? I know, we're not being opposite. We want to do it. We just want to be clear.
Yeah, makes sense. All right. You have it this way. Um, old men in landfill well modification. So I'm hopeful this one can go on the consent agenda. So we might. Uh, we talked about it here before, you put new wells in. Uh, payback period is within a few years. Save over $8,000 a year, so, you know, three year payback period on two. And it's right, you have to, yeah. Uh, third floor climate control. So, uh, Dan Byers working, getting quotes for this. Um, this would be, uh, to do heat and cooling with mini splits similar to what we have downstairs in, um, the front office, Katie's office here and Jen's office in the back. Um, so we, you know how annoying these, disruptive these air conditioners are. Um, and I talked, talked to Dan, who's also, Dan Byers is also on historical to make sure that there's not a tie in with that, that we need to get some approval.
Jen, you actually have heat that would work?
I would have heat. I would not need to use the space heater that I have to hide every time I keep in.
Yeah, also, when you talk to historical, like, you know, we're working on the space, right? But if we can get those in a place that if in a future time we repair here, that it's not in a historical way.
Yeah, or for the sag is.
Right, stuff like that.
Yeah, for, for sure.
Just whatever. I mean, this is a big space. They might have to put two fans.
CPA funds, any, any luck on that? I mean, I'd say. Climatizing this air would actually help the preservation.
It would. He wouldn't get the paint.
Right. That's the note I sent you, that we should pursue that.
I, I asked Tom about different ones, but I, I think I failed to do that one, so I will ask CPA. Um, senior center emergency well repair, um, this, uh, yeah, we, you have to do this to do, this is actually, this is something we did right away because. Um, and now they, they kind of floated it. They spent money that was appropriated for something else because it's right, it, the emergency well repair. Um, mapping software, uh, we just, we talked about, we had a demonstration from near map. Uh, we'll look at other, um, solutions as well, um, so we're not just going with them. Um, I have $10,000 here. We have a quote for nine thousand, I don't know, something, but if we don't sign it for six months, I want to put some escalation in there. Thermo water asset management grant, um, matching funds. So, uh, I thought we had until annual town meeting to be able to do this. And then speaking with our consultant, um, we need to have, we don't need to expend any money, but we need to show a commitment of the funds as available by January. So, um, I thought it was July one. Um, so it's $47,000. It's a $120,000 grant. There are $33,000 of in-kind services, so that's, um, the time of highway staff, the surveyor, very few hours of my time. Um, and then an anticipated kind of wear and tear on vehicles as we like drive around. We're just trying to up the, um, in-kind donation part, um, in-kind contribution part. Um, and then $47,000, which gets us to a $200,000 program. I, do I talk about it here? I don't have my commentary here, so, um, I do, where did I write this? I, I wrote this commentary somewhere, so, um, I'll go through and I'll have it be the tasks of what the program are that go into here. I do, where did I write this? I, I wrote this commentary somewhere, so, um, I'll go through and I'll have it be the tasks of what the program are that go into here. Province City Culver Construction, um, so this came, this came from capital planning, so I kind of want to. This in here, so there was a vote last night, uh, it doesn't, so it doesn't have to be on the warrant, uh, but they recommended putting it on the warrant, um. An additional cash contribution to the Providence Street Culver Construction to reduce the amount ultimately requested to be borrowed. Uh, so we've, to refresh, we've got roughly two million dollar project, three hundred thousand already committed in free cash. Two hundred and sixteen thousand in grants, um, five hundred thousand in anticipated grants, so that's just over a million dollars there. Um, and then, um. About five hundred thousand dollars, um, in capital, uh, stabilization, so one point five million, borrow the other half a million. Um, and this capital, um, voted two to one, we voted, um, to recommend, uh, putting a cash contribution towards the construction. Uh, I think, and that's, you know, we would use this first, right? We would all always borrow last, um, so it's. I, I will do the taxpayer impacts kind of swag on it and say, what does this lower your tax bill by each year by doing it?
James, that's.
Uh, oh yeah, James is from capital planning, um, we talked about this yesterday.
James, go ahead.
Awesome, thank you. So the big part was we wanted to give you guys an opportunity to have more of those funds available if we had the free cash there. Just like John talked about for the, for the, uh, roadway work, you know, if the funds are out there, we wanted to make sure that was present to the select board as an option, so. Just take it as, as that, um, we, we think it's a good idea to have those funds set aside, but it's obviously gonna be a bigger vote than just that.
And would this be free cash or would it be from CapEx?
Um, the way I just explained it would be from free cash and then the capital would be additive to that if. The select board wanted to go along.
We said capital stabilization that you're saying the five hundred is in CapEx.
Yeah, alright, yeah, so this would, this would be on top of it, yeah.
Uh, is reasonable, especially with all the. Extra funds.
I think it shows, if we're supposed to go and ask for both an operational and debt exclusion in the same, uh, on the same ballot, um, then I think, um, showing. Current funds and lowering the impact on taxpayers regardless of whether it's a hundred or fifty or a hundred and fifty, I think the action of it is important.
The question would be asked, then CapEx would be quite around a hundred thousand after your allocation of a hundred thousand, because your balance is about five hundred now, five hundred.
With, with the hundred, it would be, with the new hundred, it would get to five forty five.
Two hundred and both forty five left, alright.
Um, the question may be, if you give two million in capital, I mean, just to province you with that. Use the extra half million to do that. My answer is there's other stuff I do too and don't really want to borrow for fire department turnout gear replacement. Um, so this is, um, like I said, there's the two piece process, there's the, um, replacing the gear and then there's the getting everybody an additional set of gear. And we put the replacing in the general fund and then we put the new set of gear in the, as a, um, uh, one time here. Uh, I think, I think we have to do it in three years, maybe, maybe four years, as we add staff, this number will change. If we add staff, this number will change. Um, the fire department had two vehicle requests, um, kind of a sixty thousand dollar and a twenty five thousand dollar one, give or take. Um, the capital planning recommended as well, um, a boat and trailer, so a small inflatable boat to, uh, Lake, Lake Nipmunk, um. Activities, um. Um, we have a member of the regional dive team on staff, um, who would utilize it in the event that we need, um, to do a rescue on Lake Nipmunk. And then UTV and trailer, UTV is like a side by side, like a, not those, not that, it wouldn't be this brand, but like a John Deere Gator, something like one of those is. Um, we have the brush truck to be able to, you know, respond, um, to, to brush fires, uh, but there's a lot of parts of town where that's even like too big to kind of get into stuff. Um, a lot of either the trail network or, um, if there's small brush fires, um, within, um, kind of thicker stuff. Uh, so the trailer holds, I forget how many gallons, uh, but the trailer that it toes behind would have, um, water available to it and then this would be able to get in and out, um. Of, of tighter spaces. Um, the chief sent some photos of that kind of stuff, I could share it, obviously in better sense rather than me talking about it. We used to have a boat.
No.
Traded in for something, not sure why.
It also, um, was, was it CONCOM or the Lake Nipmunk Association was gonna. Try to share that or use that boat as something, I thought I saw a reference to that, so did you hear anything about that?
It seems to me that I can ask.
Just check into that, I thought I heard, I don't remember what, I think I heard that in the CONCOM meeting, but that, maybe I didn't.
Maybe it was mentioned in capital planning, eating that I, I attended.
To share the usage.
It was just, you know, is that possibility there and the question actually was, at the capital meeting was. Probably not.
Yeah, but I heard it, it seems that it's the fire department, that might be very difficult to share that vehicle.
Right, because we wouldn't want to spend twenty five thousand dollars on something in the one time, in three years, we need it, it's tied up for the CONCOM sidewalk.
It was floated.
Okay, maybe, so somebody's planning on that, yeah, let's just be clear about it.
Yeah, I, that was, yeah, I, I don't know anyway. Um, highway backhoe, this was the number one priority for the, um, for the highway superintendent, um, it's been listed as a replacement fiscal twenty six for the last couple of years. Um, I asked, I asked department heads to do their own internal rankings, to say what, you know, urgent, one, two, three, um, and this was, um, this was the only thing ranked as one for the highway. So there's a couple of other things in there, but without, um, knowing what free cash was yesterday, um, wanted to focus on what the department's number one priorities were.
It's either replacement or.
Either replacement, yeah, so, uh, there's a, a small salvage value on our current one, I want to say like fifteen thousand dollars maybe, uh, just, I imagine it's just for the steel, it's kind of end of, end of life. Um, beach bathroom upgrades, um, so this went to, this is being submitted by the parks commission and it went to capital last night, because the parks commission was there, um, it's kind of small dollar amounts. It, I'd asked about revolving funds, uh, paying for this sort of thing, um, it gets used by more than just the camp stuff, um, so, um, it's kind of a more general good. Such a small dollar amount though, um, so I want to, I want to make sure I have, I want to make sure that's right, that we're not, this isn't actually eighteen thousand dollars.
This is just the beach bathrooms, not the bathrooms up in the park.
Yes. Um. CPA meets, CPC meets tomorrow, I think, um, and, uh, Dan Byer, uh, Parks Commission will be going at that point, um, this is beach kayak rental, a self-service kayak, um.
This is interesting.
Uh, yeah, if, there's, there's two ways to do it, you kind of have a service based on, you buy a kind of subscription where they handle everything, or you just buy and do it yourself, uh, so. Kind of price well who goes out together, they're expensive, um, and it's kind of a nice to have, um, so in, um. Uh, Dan's mind, it was, um, if CPA funding's not available, he wouldn't look towards free cash funding, um.
I mean, is it a revenue generator or is it a service?
Um, you, you generate a small amount of revenue, so, um, I think, I'm trying to think now. The, the Maynard has one and I believe they generated about three thousand dollars worth of revenue, but it's like a.
But it's not a debt negative.
It's like a third, it's like a thirty thousand dollar initial investment, so you, you get that funded, then you're over a year, it's sustainable, um, but it's, you just need that one time to, to get it. I'll pick that up in a minute. Um, so. Um, senior center upgrade, so. Uh, I'd said before, I had heard anecdotally, um, from people who. Experience this daily, that the back deck of the senior center is, um, end of life and unsafe and they haven't used it, um, and that we need a second egress from the. Second level sort of there, so, um, the building commissioner went on Friday, I met with him today, he said the deck needs to be replaced. Um, and because it's a means of egress for the building, that's, um, that's public uses, that's made out of either wood or metal. Um, it needs to be inspected every five years as well, and that hasn't happened.
It'd need to be ADA compliant as well, because it's an exit.
Uh, sure, likely, yeah, I didn't get there, but likely.
Well, it's just, I, that's, you know, it's, it's, it's high up, right? That's gonna be an expensive.
Nothing else of that.
Yeah, I mean. Well, yeah, I mean, we've got.
There's a ramp going up to the front door.
The, the turn's not wide enough, so.
Yeah.
We're ADA compliant.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I'm not sure if you need both of your means of egress to be ADA compliant.
Okay.
Um, that, I mean, when we do this level of work, there'll be that code tie in, um, so I don't, I don't have a price, um, but. On the second piece, the egress, um, you do not need, um, a second egress from that second floor there, um. It's different in the public, but the way, um, building commissioner explained it is, you know, your house doesn't have a second egress on the second floor, you have your stairs to your first level and then you have egresses from there and, um, the same applies here. Um, so we'll, um, talk with some contractors quickly and get what the deck price would be, but this is, um. This is urgent for the continued use of the senior center kind of in fiscal twenty six, twenty seven, so regardless of the future, uh, home of the senior center and regardless of the future use of the current senior center. This is something that the town would continue to get benefit from it, should, should be great. Um, and some housekeeping stuff, um. We have a beach engineering account from CPA that has twenty five hundred bucks left, so close that out, turn it back to CPA. Um, land use committee wants some money to do a boundary plan, um, from amended land bank. Uh, and then this is a list of. Town meeting articles that have balances that you no longer need, so a lot of it, right, when you see town meeting room equipment, seven dollars and seventy two cents, stuff, stuff like that is just, you know, we. There's a little bit left that we didn't spend. The street sweeper, uh, we ended up just getting a way better price, uh, than we initially thought we were gonna give either a dip. I think we had the, like, the new, newest model estimated out and then we got a call that, hey, we have one here on the floor, rather than wait for the one you ordered, you want to take the one now, it's still a brand new one. Um, so I, I believe that's why there's such a huge balance there, but compared to John, we can, we can close that out, so these were all from free cash, um, I'm gonna try to do one, I'm gonna write a placeholder.
Is included in your other, in the two million dollar estimate?
Because they wouldn't, because this is not, this would not be a bill for future recurring year appropriation, you wait till it be certified at this point next year.
But still.
So there's a lag, but we, we gotta do it at some point, so.
Yeah.
Um, there's also, there's others, um, that have small dollar amounts, uh, but I didn't get a chance to talk to the people who, um, it relates to and I don't want to close out their six thousand dollars if they have. Like, there's one that I, I thought I could close out, um, it's got twenty eight hundred dollars and twenty four dollars, but Dan and Ann said no, so, um. There will likely be some from stabilization, just, just to give you a, just to give you a sense, this is, oh, shoot, sorry. So these are all of our, um, current special funds, right, so. Um, and where they've been appropriated from, you know, we have stuff that's open that goes back, I think there's one in here, it's like twenty thirteen. Um, but we've got about a million dollars, um, in general fund, one point four million dollars in, um, in general fund, um, accounts that are open right now for various things, yeah. That includes two hundred, you know, some, some big ones here that really drive it, um.
Thirty one thousand in community celebrations is that from this current.
No.
Block we haven't paid out or that's?
No, so that was initially voted on here in twenty seventeen, it was initially voted for the three fiftieth and then in twenty twenty two, I have the vote, I forget here. Um, I had, this is the twenty twenty six version, fiscal twenty six version and my fiscal twenty five version, I have a note when the vote was, but then it was revoted to make it a community celebrations.
Yeah.
So what this does is it's going to fund the deficit of the current rock the block, the couple grand that was not funded by donations.
So this spreadsheet's unexpended funds?
Yeah. Um, some, a lot of it's committed to contracts, like the engineering design for Providence Street Culvers, it says two hundred and twenty four thousand dollars, but that's committed to a contract, um, this is just, uh.
Like thirty one thousand for the elevator?
And CPA, yep.
There's some interesting stuff.
Town hall windows, forty thousand dollars, I, I've not been involved in that project, uh, but I've been told that's forty thousand dollars for the engineering related to town hall windows, not anything to do with the actual construction, which. Seems a lot for engineering, but in a historic building, I, I haven't worked on that, so. Um.
Yeah, CPA's or the historic is really moving on that either, so it's just.
It's in there right now.
Well, my, my memory is that that number's, was sitting there because. There's a discussion about re, reconfiguring that back hallway, it's not ADA compliant, it's very steep going up those. So the, they held off on all the windows.
The exit, you mean, uh?
Also, this is expended, that, so that's what I'm talking about, the lag, um, on spring broke, like, that, that's, this is zero. Um, but.
It's a two fifty for road repair, that's higher on the spreadsheet, that's also been committed or expended.
Uh, no, we, we haven't spent, we haven't spent that from last, I guess I'd have to ask John, but I don't think we spent that. Um. Yeah, there's, there's, you know, according to this, two and a half million dollars tied up here, um, I think there's some timing issues there, uh, but these small ones is just housekeeping to. Back to free cash.
What point do we start working through the backlog? A lot of projects.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, some of, some of them need to be rectified because, you know, we could, we could reallocate some more imminent activities.
Some of that money.
Some of those things I want to happen.
Well, yeah, so it wanted to happen, but if they're not going to, because there's not support people, we should know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, um, yeah, it's, um. It needs to kind of champion, we don't have like just a capital projects person who just does capital projects, so like each individual kind of department needs to champion their thing, um, and then I. Provide lots of execution and procurement and, and that kind of support, but like, yeah, I haven't, I haven't driven these projects yet.
Kind of thing an assistant town administrator could do.
Very ATA like.
Uh, prioritize, kind of put it off, say, let's. Tell me where you are two weeks.
You made an operations director.
Absolutely. Uh, supplemental road funding, I have two fifty here, because that's what we've been talking about, uh, capital planning, didn't talk much about this yesterday because. Thought it was one of the things that if free cash was not as robust, um, that was nice to have, um. But, um. After a nice discussion, uh, prioritization of what I've taken, where I think we should still continue to fund this. Um, this community preservation bylaw that Tom talked about, Tom Rowley talked about, and then I have holds, just because I don't have any, um, specifics for it yet and didn't get to it today, but the gender neutral bylaw and the animal control bylaw. So that's where we're at. Until meeting, so, uh, once I get, you know, the input from everybody else, like I said, we'll finalize this, get it online. Um, I think this was really useful, a couple of folks really liked it at the annual. And I, I think my favorite part about it is it allows people to be a little bit more comfortable with what's, gets into the consent agenda and then we can put as much as possible in the consent agenda and things along. That's it. Anything that, besides, I know we talked, I think, I dumped our question. Anything else that you want, want to add?
Yeah, so you said you're gonna send something out that has a QR code to access, is, is, is that gonna be the, the warrant?
Yeah, so as we, we've always sent the warrant, alright, either the.
Yeah.
Three page, if it gets there, two page, whatever it is, um, and then prominently placed on that will be, but I. One of my old man opinions, like I, I dislike that everything's gone with QR code route, like you want to be handed a menu sort of thing, um, but, so I don't want to just default to having that on a thing, I want like a URL, so you could also, just like I said, type it in your computer. We can go short URLs too, so it can be mendanma.gov slash like STM, it'll just bring you to it.
Also, on probably like splash page on the website.
So all, it'll be, the way it'll be construed is a subpage, the town administrator's page, and then we can make it a featured item on the, on the, on page when you get there.
Is there time to get something into the newspaper, the press, you know, there, it's not super frequent?
Yeah, so they do, I mean, we can, we're not being in October one, we can probably get there, you know.
You still have to mail it though, right? If it's a good mail.
I'm just thinking, yeah, well, right, we do, but I'm just thinking that, like, just more, more ways of reaching people, because this is really good information and, I mean. I don't know, how many pages is that? Too many, too many for the free press, right?
Right now it's fourteen, um, and that doesn't include any comment.
Right, but I mean, it might be nice to have like a, like a press release for that that says, hey, there's this fourteen page document that walks you through the warrant that's available.
Bill online, I speak up at the town clerk's office. So we have hard copies, that'd be interesting. Uh, we use, we end up using the. The ramp, the window at Tracy's office, the treasure reflectors office as a, that's where most of the walk-in folks are, um, to do the free press and the amended, um, senior newsletter, COVID tests and, you know, that kind of stuff. Right there, so, place there too. Well, it's a good idea and.
This is great, I mean, and it's, I think. You were. I know you did this for the annual town meeting, but you were, it was still much closer to the annual town meeting, this, this is, this is nice.
Yeah, that was, my goal was to have it done by the time I sent the warrant out, about a month ahead of time, so. Today's, so next Friday is the tenth, so I'm hopeful to have this done on the ninth or the tenth and get it out.
This is really great, I think, I think the, yeah, the town's gonna be really happy to have this information this far in advance.
I, I don't know if I share this with the board, after my first special town meeting, a resident who recently moved here from Williamstown came in and said, hey, Williamstown does this report thing, it'd be really great, your warrant doesn't tell me anything. Said, yeah, I plan to, you got it, don't worry, and then the warrant got mailed out for annual town meeting, and two days later, that same guy came in holding their, like, I thought we talked about this, and I was like, I'm working on it, I promise you'll have this, and so. Yeah, I want the warrant and this to be ready at the same time.
Yeah, do you have his address, can you say? I can have it this time. You print at least one copy, and say, like, everybody else.
All right, new business, that's a new line.
Yeah, I think, because I put together this agenda at the end, Katie didn't get to do the housekeeping, she typically does, and I left it on there.
All right, so I'm gonna pass over fourteen and go right back to the town administrator.
Um, yeah, so. I spent a lot of time on labor and town meeting stuff in the last couple of weeks. One thing we've got, we had a manager training last Thursday, headed by, by a presenter from our EAP, so Jen set it up, we had a lunch and learn up here, who's attended by, I think, everybody who manages people.
Yeah, the only one who's going to attend, because they had safety training at NIMOK.
So, yeah, we had, we had a manager here, two hours lunch, presentation questions, it was, it was really great, it didn't, wasn't, didn't address every. Aspect a managerial face, and everybody's just a little bit different, you know, managing in a fire department and in a library is a lot different than when this treasurer collector has one staff member, those are different, but it kind of gave everybody a. Baseline understanding and that we're all working the same, and then we can, we can go a little bit from there. One of the, this is a little inside baseball, but one of the things that's been quality of life improvement on the planning side is we previously would take all of our application fees just into the revolving fund, and then pay everything out from there, and that's not how you're supposed to do it, so split it out on. Project by project, so you can budget and, and report that way, so it's been a long slog to try to unwind how many years worth of that, but. New ones coming forward, we've set up correctly and have executed well on, so planning has, has been really appreciated to that, and the work that accounting's done on that. Yesterday, or so, sorry, Monday, I met with. Senior, senior center director, principal assessor, HR, treasurer, collector, myself, about the senior worker program, the senior tax abatement worker program, so, one presentation. Either on the fifteenth or the, or the time after, I owe, I owe a memo to the group about the parameters for the program going forward. So it's good, we're on the same page, I feel a lot more comfortable with what we have to say, what went. And two things, lastly, yesterday, Jen and I attended an all-day, very dour session of the state of health insurance in Massachusetts. So.
The brownies were good.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot, there was presentations from state level agencies, and a panel discussion with the heads of Maya Benefit Trusts. The GIC, and, which is the Group Insurance Commission, it's a full insurance carriers, and then a pretty senior representative from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Massachusetts. And one of the, one of the crazy things that we, we saw was that the trend since twenty eighteen is that healthcare utilization is down. Length of stays, inpatient stays are up, and spending is up, so fewer people are using healthcare, it is taking them longer to navigate through it, and it's costing everybody. So.
It's not great news.
Yeah, that combination stuff. Other things like, we'll have to get notice out to, to folks, Blue Cross Blue Shield just started it, I think, already to policyholders, but.
Yeah, I think the letter went out, that's why I got the first question today.
So in calendar year twenty twenty-four, Blue Cross, Cross, I can't say that, ECBS of Massachusetts, lost four hundred million dollars, as I'm a P and M. They also spent three hundred million dollars on GLP-1s, so like Ozempic-style drugs. So start, starting January one, twenty twenty-six, they are no longer covering GLP-1s for weight loss.
Just for diabetes.
Just for diabetes. And they're offering entities with a hundred lives or more, the option to add it as a rider, and then you say, if you also do all these kind of. Classes and lifestyle choices, and all, all lifestyle changes, all these things, then we'll cover it for weight loss, but we don't even trigger that, so they're not going to cover GLP-1s for weight loss anymore, which we. We've got an inquiry, so we apparently, we have folks on, or maybe, I don't know what, what they're on it for, but they're on it, so. That'll be a frustrating change for folks, when you pay twenty percent more for your premiums, and then one of your most beneficial pieces goes away. But that's a business decision they make, and acknowledge the kind of slippery slope of it, to say, here's a drug that we know treats, effectively treats a chronic condition. That affects twenty-seven percent of people in Massachusetts in obesity, and then we're not gonna cover it because it's too expensive. You say the same thing with cancer drugs, and so, so they have a sticky issue on their hands. In any event. Somebody from somewhere in Hampshire County stood up and said, we saw an eighteen percent increase in our premiums to start the fiscal year. So we had nineteen point nine percent, like, why are you standing up talking about this, and then he said, then the Hampshire Benefit Trust came to us mid-year and said, if we don't have another twenty percent increase mid-year of the benefit, the trust is going to be insolvent. So we had essentially a forty percent year-over-year increase in premiums, fifteen percent staff in the whole town. So this is affecting communities large and small, the, the last presenter was about. You know, plan, design, change, how you can perhaps move over to GIC, save five percent in your first year, sort of thing, long slog of a process that we're certainly going to explore. We're gonna explore some other plan change stuff, so we talked about the high deductible health plan, how to move people there, changes to retiree contributions towards retiree plans, capping. Capping either the opt-out or the deductible contribution, because if we continue to see fifteen to twenty percent increases in healthcare premiums, it's just, it's, it's going to be unsustainable. As the plan is set up right now, the seventy-five, twenty-five split premiums is contractual, so we have to go into each individual collective bargaining agreement to change that split. I, I believe that, I know the opt-outs, seventy-five, I believe that's place.
The seventy-five, twenty-five is definitely in the contracts, the opt-out is the one I was questioning.
So that's what that process that I talked about, section twenty-one to twenty-three, whether you move into GIC, you can do that outside a collective bargaining, but that requires an insurance advisory commission, and this whole, it's also a big process, so we're going to explore it, just because it's such a huge knock for us. I don't think we have the, the time and the staff to get it ready for fiscal twenty-seven, you should need to notify GIC by December first if you intend to move into that, and they have their own problems, so it's not like they're a silver bullet either, so we gotta do the analysis before we, before we talk about that. But it's, you know, I'm gonna change my ten percent assumptions on what premium increases are over the next couple of years, you know, more at the fourteen to fifteen percent level. So it's two days ago, and then today, I didn't want to, because Tom's not the, the expert on the, on the current state of it, but we've had an issue with illegal cattle in town. You may have seen, you know, illegal animal operations in town too, so you may have seen some loose cows around town, or posted about online, so.
They get put into the pound.
Well, if we have. We do have.
Right.
That was.
So the cows have gotten out multiple times, the cows, you know, we have licensing issues, we have. Landowners trying to evict the person, so all sorts of, all sorts of stuff happening on. Outside of select board's purview, with select board can news, issue a cease and desist for operating cattle without a license, so I don't have all the reports and everything, but I want to be bringing that to select board, and we'll have. An agenda item next week to, to GIC cease and desist, the board's help kind of has their own method, which we met about, and they're going to be taking off too, we've got a zoning method, so we're going on the. Criminal, on the zoning, on the board of health, and then licensing piece, and just wanted to say it here, and telegraph it, because it's, it's a nuisance, these cows that are escaping, somebody, somebody might get hurt, you know, cows in the road, sort of thing. So just wanted to say the town is fully aware of it, is taking it seriously, and using multiple levers that we have in our disposal to be able to progress. So. I, I laugh sometimes at about the differences in my day, so I went from veterans workoff program, health insurance, to cows, and like, muster regulations, back to back to back to. That's all, and I'm out tomorrow.
All right, thank you, town administrator. New agenda items, plant inventory of land, that's still not really, probably put that to D, because it's not really on a. Anywhere soon purview, that's really probably gonna be in the spring, after budget.
Why?
Because they're not, there's the town planner is consumed with all these other things.
I wouldn't necessarily say after budget, definitely after a special, maybe, maybe not till the spring, but definitely after a special town.
To be, I mean, this is not, understand the, the town meeting piece, but this isn't heavy lifting.
Well, we can have a discussion.
Well, no, I think.
What you're talking about, that you, if you want the actual plan.
No, no, I mean, I think it's a multi-step process, where you need to gather the inventory, lay it out, so you have a discussion about it.
But we have that tertiary information, yeah, there's no metadata.
You know, the town planner is ready, willing, able to start and get going, said to me, let, let me know kind of when you want to get started, I, I know they had a lot of bylaw changes on, on the. I had a lot of bylaw changes for town meetings, so, so I shouldn't even say, maybe not after, I mean, after we have the town meeting warrant done and all of that, because one, once that's done and ready to go, the preparation between there and town meeting is kind of late, so.
I just think that one has some ancillary impacts to other things we talked about, that to get that foundation, at least somewhat cogent, hopefully be a thing else.
That's fair.
Let's prioritize. We talked earlier about fee structure, and so, again, after STM, we're gonna have a stronger discussion about how to solidify that fee structure across the entire bylaw kind of body. And the general bylaw review committee has been discussing that as they go along, so they should have some advice. Parks Commission.
I met with one of the parks commissioners today, we've had five applicants, two of them, upon being told that we had other applicants, said they're not interested, they were just gonna do it, you know, to help out the town if no one else wanted to, but if someone else wants to step up, they'll step back, so we've got three folks. Parks wanted to, so they're gonna set up an interview. So we couldn't do the fifteenth, because planning, there's, there's too much in that meeting, so pick a meeting after that, first meeting after that, second meeting after that. And they'll come here at a regular special, a regular select board meeting, so it won't be.
And then the presentation for the senior workoff program, I mean, you talked about that earlier, is that they're gonna come on the eleventh, you know, on the fifth, or?
Did I say, did I say the fifteenth?
You said the fifteen, but. It all depends, I think, on how much.
On how much feedback I get from staff too, so I, I'll have my memo out next week, and then, so, we'll, we'll be able to tell before the agenda, so it's, whether I have the feedback or not.
And that'll be like COA, or that'll be Jen and COA, you, or who's gonna present that?
See, yeah, COA will, so the, the kind of. Relationship of the program, so COA drives it kind of programmatically, gets the people, applied, involves, assigned, that kind of thing, and then treasurer, make sure the payments, the, you know, because they have paid through payroll. Are applied to their tax bills properly, assessor gets paid out of overlay, so that needs to be a consideration when they talk about overlay, Jen has them, you know, in the, they need, they need to be hired into our, into our system. I really don't do much with it, but kind of placements, making sure what types of projects could come to me and say, I need somebody to shred this week, and I connect them with the project. So Amy will be, the senior center director will be presenting, I think, the bulk of it, because she's the one who does most of it, we call the veterans and senior abatement program, we don't currently have any veterans in the program.
All right, and as always, if you have any future agenda items, please send them via email, or, or you can go in, actually propose it in the select board portal on Civic Click. And then when I meet with Jeremy and Katie, usually on Mondays, you know, we see all, that's how we go through the agendas via Civic Click. So just a little note there, all right, so next meetings will be October fifteenth and November fifth, twenty twenty-five, and then for the final item. We're gonna be going into executive session for reason number three, and we will not reconvene in open session, we will adjourn from executive session, so. I'm about to read it right now. And so I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the body to discuss the collective bargaining agreements with all union and non-union contracts. And the board will not reconvene in open session after the executive session solely for the purpose of adjourning, and will adjourn from executive session. Yes, that's my motion.
Senator.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote, could or I?
Who goes I?
All right, motion, sorry, all those against, motion passes, have a good night, everybody, we will be adjourning from our executive side.
Remote attendees?
No remote attendees.